Starting in five, four, three, two, one. Recording started.
Thank you, Peter. This is Ray Weldy, the Lower South Hampton Township Board of Supervisors. Welcome to the April 14th, 2021 work session. We're going to have a short public work session before we transition into the public meeting. I'll turn the microphone over now to Supervisor Kim Koutirotis. Kim?
Yes, thank you, Ray. So, over the, over the probably past two years, I've been receiving a lot of complaints from, from two neighbors in particular who live on Southeast View, which is off of Street Road. They are in, in a, in a close proximity to, to Street Road itself. And there's been issues over the past two years where one of the businesses out on Street Road, two, three, four times a week, they have, they get deliveries for the business and tractor trailers are pulling up in front of these, these two homes. Not only do they pull up, sometimes they even, you know, sometimes they even try to turn around some of the smaller box trucks. But we're, we're talking, a lot of the times, there are full-blown tractor trailers. It's caused physical damage to the driveways of these homes. It's just, you know, it, it blocks their driveway. It's caused physical damage to their driveways. It's gotten to the point that these two residents have actually had to chain off their driveways to stop people from pulling in their, their driveways, which creates a little bit of an issue for them too, because now when they want to pull up in front of their house, they have to stop their vehicles, you know, undo the chains, pull in, and put the chains back up. It's been a, a long-going issue. And it's primarily with commercial vehicles. That's, that's their real gripe. They understand that, you know, cars may pull up in front of their house. They, they don't have an issue with that. Their issue is the tractor trailers and the big box trucks. I had made the recommendation to them that I know we had similar issues here on Central Avenue a few years back, where people were parking commercial vehicles. And at that time, we were able to have the, I think the majority of the road posted no commercial parking. That has worked terrific for Central Avenue. I, I sent pictures of the, the tractor trailers to Chief Krimmel and to Mike Italia, just to show them what's been going on. I know, I, I think Chief has also received complaints over the past few years. I was just wondering if there's anything we can do about this, since, you know, I've, I've seen it firsthand. It's been an ongoing issue for years. I would like to try to make the, the residents happy as far as the, the tractor trailers and the box trucks not, you know, not parking out and, you know, out in front of their, their homes anymore. I, I don't know if, you know, I don't know if we can do the same thing as, as, you know, as we did on Central, which, you know, worked wonderfully. And I just wanted to throw out to the board and, you know, and to Mike and to Ted to see what their comments might be. So, with that said, gentlemen, what do you think?
Chief, have at it. I'll back you up.
They've been complaining longer than two years. It's probably more like 10 years. I'm okay with it. That picture of the tractor trailer, that was, I agree with residents, it's ridiculous. They're blocking the driveways or everything else. So, I'm fine if that's what the board wants to do.
Yep, so we can, we can draft an ordinance restricting commercial traffic to that. And then we would also notify the businesses in the area, once it's passed, to notify their delivery personnel to go elsewhere.
So, could we post that road with a, post it saying no commercial vehicles over 26,000 pounds or something to that nature?
We have to pass an ordinance. We'll have to pass an ordinance.
Regardless.
The chief, generally what happens, we look at the existing ordinances and the chief tells us where he wants to put it, and we do an amended ordinance and we bring it back to the board.
Okay.
Does it, does it, is there any information on what time of day this is happening, Kim?
You know, it's, you know, it's during the afternoon generally is when the, the tractor trailers are coming. But they, you know, they did say that, you know, from time to time, they make it, they may get later deliveries. I guess it really depends on the, the distributors, how, how their day is going. You know, it, it's normally two, three days a week, because, you know, the businesses have different, different drop-offs, different days. But, you know, I just know in my line of business, you know, when we get deliveries from our distributors, it's not ever the exact same time. I mean, it, it's probably every day before, I'm just gonna estimate, I'm sure they're probably not getting deliveries after, after eight o'clock at night. But, you know, it's primarily during daylight hours.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we're working on ordinance. I'll talk to the chief. I have to talk to him about something else anyhow, so we'll talk about it.
All right, very, very good then. I appreciate that. I'm sure the, the residents will be very happy about that though. Thank you. That's, that's all I had, Ryan. It was the only thing.
No problem. Mike, Mike, before we go into the public meeting, I have a question for you. And so I don't disrupt the public meeting on item 1H on the consent agenda. And that is the approval of the escrow release for county builders at the Brickyard, $203,164. Now, when I looked at that, your letter said, of April 7th, said, "We received recommendation from Tri-State to release this, and it leaves a 10% contingency of $79,462.94 to cover any further expenses." But when you look at page three of that, the certificate of completion, it states that the construction escrow was $794,629.40. The contingency 10% was $79,462.94, for a total escrow of $874,092.34. Below that, the previous escrow releases are $670,092.7. And the current escrow release would be $203,164. And then that states that the subtotal would be $874,092, which matches the total escrow and an amount remaining of zero. So, is there, is that 10% contingency for further issues in there, or it's not in there?
The $79,000s for anything that pops up within the agreement period. I'll let Frank speak on how that, how that works out.
Yeah, I believe it's 18 months after the final escrow release is what's provided for in the agreement. I don't have it in front of me. I don't think I did that one, but I suspect that's what it says. And so, I think, so I think what you're asking, Ed, is are we keeping the 79, or, right, are we keeping the $79,000?
Yeah, because according to this, when we release the $203,164, there's going to be zero remaining in the escrow account.
It's a construction escrow. This is held at their bank. So, this is us, like their bank holds this, the escrow. The contingent, the 10% should be separated out of that, is, is how I understood it. Tri-State did the numbers.
Yeah, but, so, when you, when you add the contingency to the construction escrow, you get $874,000 and change. When we look at previous escrow releases and tonight's release, we're giving back $874,000 and change. So, I just want to make sure that this 10% contingency is somewhere. We're not giving back every dime.
So, I think, Mike will check it before we get there. And two, if we need to modify the motion to release everything but the $79,000 and change, we'll recommend a suggested change. Mike, that make sense?
Correct. I'm looking, I'm looking at it right now.
Okay.
So, I'll have it hopefully by the time you get there.
Okay, thanks. Any other items for the work session?
I do have two questions I've been wanting to ask. The right to know that we get from, we, do we have actually two right to know, right? We have two right-to-know officers, one in administration and one in the police department, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we get the right to knows from you, Joe. We're not getting any right to knows from the police department. And I would like to know if we can get the right to knows from the police department as well, since we get them from the administration part.
Chief, do you want to handle that?
I can look into that. I'll have to run it past the DA's office, because sometimes the requests come in for things that are ongoing investigations, things of that nature.
Right, but the one, yeah. But the one, you're able to finish up. I would like to see the, the right to news on that.
I'm gonna have to call the district attorney and get some guidance on that, but I'll, I'll check it out for you.
Okay, and the other question I have is, we have a policy on when all, all employees that drive township vehicles, correct? And what's the policy on when they get their driver license checked? Is it yearly, every six months?
What happened was, we used to run employee licenses through the system like, like normal. The, the state of Pennsylvania prohibits us from doing that now. They have a form, I believe we gave it upstairs, that checks the license. I, I forget, they charge $10 or $15 or something.
It's $9, yep.
It's $9, okay. And upstairs kind of handles our things. We don't check the officer's licenses generally. I mean, they tell us if there's a problem. It's always been a problem once in, in my knowledge, and then we took care of it.
So, is that automatically, they even check the officer's license yearly?
Well, here's what would happen. If, if an officer gets arrested or his driver's license gets suspended, they'll notify the MOPAC, and then MOPAC would tell us. So, as an example, every police officer in the state is registered MOPAC. Anything coming across for criminal arrest, for problem with driver's licenses, automatically goes to MOPAC, and MOPAC would let us know.
Okay, so what about Public Works? Yeah, I, I get it. Thanks, Ted.
Public Works would be on the, on the, on the upstairs.
Yep.
Right.
So, typically, Deb, we, we typically do that on a yearly basis. We would have to do it for this given year now that Ms. Connie's back. And with Brittany coming back, then we would be able to do that and set, submit that down to PennDOT. We do get a report back for each individual. Typically, we have the police look it over and eyeball it, just to make sure we as non-enforcement people, law enforcement people, have them, have a look at it, just to make sure we're interpreting it correctly. So, that typically is done on a yearly basis, but we are due on that.
Okay, and what about the Fire Marshal's Office?
That, that includes the Fire Marshal's Office, all admin people, as well as Public Works.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Deb. Anything else for work session?
Yes. Mike, how do, how are we doing with the cart that's at the Getty's, the old Getty Station?
Still there.
It's permitted by right, so there's, there's no movement on it. You don't have an ordinance regulating those.
Well, we, we kind of had an ordinance started by the last zoning officer. Has anything further happened to that? I would certainly like to do something about that, because we're getting a lot of flak from the bricks and mortar stores. And they're not happy about it, and I can tell you why. You know, they don't do the same things. They don't, you know, there's a whole lot of issues that those people are concerned about. And what can we do about it?
We, we would have to get an ordinance on the books, and that would be, I believe it's at Frank's office. We sent it over. I don't know when we popped it over there, to refresh it and bring it up to date. And then that, that, once that, that permit expires, typically, they would be, they would, you know, that ordinance would be applicable to them at that point.
Mike, you and I exchanged copies of ordinances. I, I don't, I remember I looked up several and you did. I don't think we ever met. I know we didn't meet. We need to meet and decide what makes sense for the township and share with the supervisors.
We just, we just have to make sure we don't make it exclusionary. You have to allow them somewhere, whether it's back in the industrial park, you know, there's like a brew pub over there, those type of places.
Well, why do we have to make it there someplace?
Because it's called exclusionary zoning, and you would be in a bad position when it comes to a court jurisdiction.
Well, I'd really like to see.
You can't block it out of your township. It's, that's illegal.
Okay, and I'll put this back on the radar, because it wasn't on the radar. And I need, I need to meet with Mike, and we will come up with a, a draft for your consideration.
All right. There was a draft, there was a draft created by the last zoning officer.
Yeah, but it wasn't.
It was never passed, though. It was adopted.
No, I agree. It was not passed, yeah.
It addressed all the things you wanted, Ed. So, okay, it's all on radar.
All right, can we continue to, can we continue, Mike, to get a listing of the things that are happening in the township from, you know, new businesses, new people, you know, that kind of thing? And what the status of them are, and in what locations?
The business is sure. I sent you one out today. That was a big.
Right, I saw that. I saw that.
That's about all that's happened recently for now. I got a couple other things that are popping in the next couple of weeks.
All right, can we know what they are, please? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Anything else for public, for work session, I'm sorry? If there isn't, we can segue into the public meeting. Peter, do you have to do anything to transition from the work session to the public meeting?
No, sir. Continue on.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. This is Ray Weldy of the Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors. Welcome to the public meetings portion of the Board of Supervisors. It's Wednesday, April 14th, 2021, at 7:54 PM. This meeting's being held via teleconference. It was advertised as such. Prior to the meeting, the board commenced a workshop at approximately 6:30 PM. When we commenced that workshop, we immediately transitioned into an executive session that lasted about an hour. In that executive session, we spoke about several personnel issues that we will probably be addressing later in this meeting. After the work, after the executive session ended, we came on live to the, to the public workshop. If everyone can please stand, we'll begin this meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First up on tonight's agenda, actually before item one, as usual, is public comment. Public comment for the teleconference meetings has been invited to send an email in to the Lower Southampton Administration Office, and then public comment is read into the record. So, I'll ask either Andor, Mr. Gatto, and Ms. Lynn if there's anything to be read in public comment.
There, there is one public comment. It's, it's from Michelle Mish. I, I hope I'm not butchering her last name. There is no address assigned to it that I see. Basically, I just saw this email, "Something needs to be done with the reckless driving through the neighborhoods. People speed and don't stop at stop signs. Can we get speed bumps? Now that the weather is nice, people, people are out with their families walking and riding bikes. This has been an ongoing issue. Why don't the cops set up any speed traps in the township?" And Chief, I think, if I remember, this may be the same individual. I think I may have mentioned this maybe about a week or so ago with regard to that, that particular department that you were going to sign on the street. I'm, I'm wondering if that's the same individual, but unfortunately, she doesn't have an address that I'm seeing on the sheet.
Okay, we get a lot of traffic complaints, and she's right, when the weather's warming up, that people tend to drive a little bit, a little bit faster. If you remember my report from last week, we were out three times on aggressive driving details. Yeah, the guys were out there doing their job. It's just, you're not going to get to every side street every day. But if you forward me that email, I can have somebody follow up with her.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Joe, maybe if, if she emailed, we have a return address, maybe someone can check with her to see if she has any specific streets that she, you know, that she identifies as problem spots, or that there's a lot of children playing in the street, and that, you know, they could focus their, their efforts there as far as enforcing the, the traffic laws.
We will reach out there.
All right, thank you. Nothing else?
Nothing else, sir.
Okay, thank you. We'll go through the agenda. Item one on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of item 1A, approval of the minutes, March 24th, 2021. 1B, approval of minutes, March 31st, 2021. 1C, approval of accounts payable, April 14th, 2021. 1D, approval of certain reoccurring monthly bills, April 14th, 2021. 1A, approval of car allowance payment to the township manager for April and May per employment agreement. Item 1F, authorization to township manager to sign a love-growth farm lease agreement. And item 1G, approval of professional fee escrow release for Thomas G. Snyder 16 Dalton Road project in the amount of $826.20. Item 1H, approval of final construction escrow release for county builders, Brickyard Project at 531 West Street Road, in the amount of $203,164.64. And I'll take a brief break there to ask Mr. Italia about that. Is that item fine as is, or does it need to be amended?
Nope, that's it. That is to close out the whole thing. The wording in my memo made it confusing, based off of the memo they provided us. The second page where you, if in your packet, it should say, let me reword, let me reword this. It's below, it's the page below their memo to Joe. It says, "Completion, certificate of completion, number three, final." Do you see that in your packets?
Yes, that's where I was getting those numbers from earlier. There should seem to be some confusion whether the 10% need to stay or not.
It's, no, it does not. They're releasing everything. That, it confused me when I, with the way it was worded up top. So, that, that was a, really, just the way I heard it was incorrect. So, I apologize for that.
No, no problem. Thank you for checking that out.
Board Chair, one second, before you proceed on this. As far as agenda, consent agenda, item E, it's actually for March and April, not for, for May and April. It's for March and April. The, the two, the two months in question.
So, item 1E?
For the car allowance.
Okay, so item, I'll go back to item 1E then, approval of car allowance payment to the township manager for the months of March and April per employment agreement. 1H has been approved by our zoning officer. And lastly, item 1I, approval of professional fee escrow release for Aitash Patel County Farms, 940 Bristol Road, variance, any amount of $300. Would anyone like to make a motion to, about the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion. Sorry.
Sue, did you make it, or did Ed?
I did make a motion. Thank you. Yes.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Cummings, a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Shannon. We'll do alphabetical roll call vote, as we've been doing in these teleconferences. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Koutirotis?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Ray Weldy, I vote yes. The consent agenda passes with a vote of 5-0. Item two, consider adoption of resolution 2021-10, sewer facilities planning module for 48 West Field Road subdivision. I'll turn this over to Mr. Italia for further cor, further explanation.
Exactly, yeah. So, this one, the, the owner is looking to subdivide the property into, into two. And they wanted to go ahead and get the sewer taken care of, because it was on the fence on whether or not it would get approved. So, instead of spending all the money going through the land development and all those type of things, they decided to go ahead and try to get approval from DEP before going into, you know, significant amount of investment going this way. So, this is the, the avenue that they decided to take.
Do you recommend this, this sewer module, facilities planning module to, for this subdivision then?
I, I do, yeah. So, we can see if DEP's gonna approve it or not. It's in that restricted area, so it's, it's not, it's not black and white, per se.
Yeah, it, it makes sense, because you don't want them to spend the money on land development if they're, if they don't have the sewer. So, and if, if they get approved, fine, and if they, if they don't, then they stop.
Right, and it's a pretty big lie. It's not like they're trying to subdivide and squeeze, you know, 10 pounds of potatoes in a bag.
That's back in behind Village Pantry, right, where wine's back in behind there?
It's where the road turns like this. It's on that corner, and it goes back.
Right.
It's a family. They're, they're gonna try and split it and build two houses, or one house next to the other one. The, that's how they want to try and set it up.
Mike, what's, what's the status of the Madrigal property? Is that two houses also?
We gotta finish this motion first.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, would anyone like to make a, a motion considering the adoption of resolution 2021-10?
So moved, Mr. Weldy.
A motion made by Mr. Koutirotis, a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Shannon. Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Koutirotis?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Ray Weldy, I vote yes. Resolution 2021-10 passes with a vote of 5-0. Item number three, consider adoption of resolution 2021-11, approving revised Citadel Federal Credit Union agreements. Mike, I'll turn this over to you again, either you and or Frank.
So, I, agreements were done some, quite some time ago. They got COVID, various modifications of plans. Mike and the engineer met the other day and reviewed everything, updated the agreements, including finding a typo later today, which has been corrected. And at this point, it's time to move forward with this project. You've already approved the project. You previously, I don't know if you authorized the plans, or I just prepared them. But at this point, for the project to move forward, we need you to adopt the resolution authorizing execution of the agreements and any additional plans or documents necessary to move forward with the project.
Well said. Yes, basically, it's, it's to revise what was in there. It went back to 2019, so we had to, we had to clear things up, update everything. We spoke to Citadel. Michelle Ken already is on the call as well from Citadel. And this is just to tie up any loose ends, get these recorded, get, get everything posted, the security agreements, so we can issue the building permits, which are ready to go.
Mike, do they have a target date to begin construction and, and complete construction?
I would have to defer to Michelle from Citadel. I believe they're ready to go. We're, the engineer and I, John, are ready to have a pre-con meeting as soon as, I believe they're waiting on their PennDOT hop permit to get finally issued. They have one other parcel they're dealing with. The lady that owns the, the pizza shop property there on the corner, there's something with the sewer running through there. They have to get an agreement from her, and that's all that's left. And then it's shovel, it's shovel ready.
Hey, Mike, can you hear me?
The car wash is.
Yes.
Okay, so, with the lady at the pizza place, it's because the ADA ramp is on, in the right-of-way on their property, so we need to get them to sign an easement agreement.
Okay, thanks, Michelle.
Yep.
And then shovel to, to, to completion, what does that look like in your view?
We're still trying to determine that, since it's taken so long to get to this point. So, I'm working on that with my team, while I'm trying to finish up getting everything in place with the authorities, so.
Okay, everything's ready to go in the township then, besides this part. Once we get these signed off, recorded, back to Citadel, you know, some volley of paper back and forth, I, I would think we'll be ready to go, hopefully before Memorial Day.
So, Mike and Frank, then, you're both comfortable with this resolution in the way it's worded?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. We would need a motion then to adopt this resolution, if anyone would like to make it?
I'll make it.
Motion made by Mr. Shannon?
I'll make.
A second?
Yep.
I'll second that Kaplan.
Seconded by Ms. Kaplan. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Ray Weldy, I vote yes. Resolution 2021 dash 11 passes with a vote of five zero. I think before we move into the manager's report, Ed, Mr. Shannon, did you have a question for Mike Italia about Madrigals?
Uh, like Madrigals and the car wash that was gonna be close to Citadel.
So Madrigals.
I can.
Madrigals out of the way here for a second, Frank. So Madrigals, the demo permit was issued. Uh, we, uh, have temporary power, waiting on Pico, uh, to get that hooked up so they can, uh, start demolition. Uh, so I'm, we're waiting on them. They're ready to go. Um, and then Frank, you want to talk about the car wash?
Yeah. The car wash application has been withdrawn.
Okay. Do you have any reasons why? Was it them? Was it us? Was it whatever?
It was nothing to do with us. It, it was, uh, the agreement between Citadel and the car wash, whatever their discussions didn't work out and, um, they're not proceeding.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank and Mike. Uh, next up on the agenda is the manager's report. Mr. Gatto?
Sure. Um, well, first we'll start off in tonight's executive session, the board discussed, uh, two personnel topics. Now I'll get to this before I get to the rest of the manager's report. So we get this done. Uh, one of the items was the potential approval of Peter Kim, uh, on as, as a temporary part-time employee basis, um, as a finance associate. And we would require or would need board action or non-action on this particular issue.
Well, I think the, there was a suggestion that, there was a discussion that you'd be authorized to negotiate uh, a part-time employment arrangement, uh, to continue the services, uh, of Mr. Kim in an employment at will basis. That is, it can be terminated by either party, either, at any time.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay. So there's a request from the manager to keep Mr. Kim on in a part-time basis. Mr. Kim, for those of you listening, um, assistant finance director and has submitted his resignation. But during the transitional phase of finance director to finance director, Mr. Kim has offered to stay on in a part-time basis of approximately 10 hours per week. Um, if anyone like, would like to make that motion to keep Mr. Kim on in that position?
I'll make that motion.
Made by Mr. Shannon, a second?
I'll second that, Ray.
I'll second.
Seconded, seconded by Mr. Kutsaratus. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Ray Weldy, I vote yes. So that motion to keep Mr. Kim on in a part-time transitional basis passes with the vote of five zero. Mr. Gatto, I'll go back to you.
The second topic was the, uh, potential approval of Ryan Smith going from acting fire marshal status to appointed, appointed fire marshal status. We would need board action or non-action on the issue?
Thank you, Joe. And, and to bring the public up to date on that, um, we've had Mr. Ryan Smith as our interim fire marshal since approximately January 7th, 2020. So, uh, a little over 15 months. Um, the board, uh, um, has made a, uh, a request to, um, make the fire marshal's position permanent and no longer an interim basis. And we had a discussion about that in our executive session tonight. Um, so I will turn over to the board if anyone would like to make a motion to, uh, further this discussion now would be the time.
I'll make that motion too. Sorry.
Ed, could you word your motion? What is your motion?
The, the motion is to make the, uh, uh, temporary fire marshal permanent.
Okay.
So, um, all right. Is that enough?
Well, I think it's still.
Need something about salary?
Appoint him as the permanent fire marshal, uh, recognizing that it is an appointment and every, you know, it's redone every year, uh, a salary to be negotiated by the township manager consistent with what was authorized when we advertised, uh, the position.
Okay.
That's so.
Yeah. Make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Shannon. Um, Ray Weldy, I'll second that motion. Uh, and if we can go down and take a roll call vote, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
And thank you. And Ray Weldy, I vote yes. That motion to appoint Ryan Smith from interim to, um, permanent fire marshal, at least for the remainder of this year, uh, passes with the vote of five zero. Congratulations, Ryan. Uh, Joe, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Board Chair. Um, as far as the manager's report, again, there's a, a request for approval, uh, to authorize the township manager to further negotiate the pool contract with the vendor and to affix a signature to contract. So this would be with the, the pool vendor. Um, this was one of the things that, uh, the former recreation director was working on. And this would allow me the flexibility to further negotiate and interact with the pool contractor, uh, so that we are able to open up the pools this summer, um, and also, um, uh, manage it because, uh, one of the pool aspects may not be, uh, working, being the fertilizer component. So this would allow me to fix my signature and to make it a formalized contract.
Well, Joe, I have a question. I have a question and that is, I, I don't know that the boards made a decision that they're opening the pool. Uh, I know there was discussion. They wanted, uh, a decision by April 15th. Has the board made a decision that they're open? I don't, I understand negotiating. I don't know how you can sign a contract. And I, I don't know that the board knows what they're approving.
Well, they did, they did approve the contract for, and I believe at the last, at the last board meeting that was on, uh, March 10th, uh, for, for the recreation director to affix his signature on there. So,
Okay.
but that, there's also that component right now where April 15th is, is when is due or due date where a, a, a check is supposed to be generated. This would, what I'd be looking for is to kind of push back that one payment and also negotiate since if fertilizer is not in play, uh, reduce down that contract obligation.
So we've already approved, I believe, the April 15th. That was our so-called drop dead date for us to make a decision whether the pools were going to open or not. And I, and I believe we approved that because we know we had until April 14th to withdraw that approval. Um, and now, Joe, you're asking for the permission to handle what Mr. Gilbert would have handled as far as the pools go, correct?
Yes, sir.
Does Frank, does Joe, I mean, Joe is the manager. Doesn't he already have that authority? Or do we need to formally make that a motion and to do that?
If you, if you approve the contract, he has the, the authority to execute contracts on your behalf.
Even, even though it was under the recreation director's signature previously?
Right. Cause would that be any different than Love Grows?
Well, I guess, I guess you gave Matt the authority to do it. Now you're telling Joe to do it. A motion won't hurt to clarify the record.
Okay. So we would need a motion then to authorize the township manager to handle the further negotiation um, with American Pool Company and the schedule for the opening of the township pool or pools.
And to go and execute the contract.
Okay. And execute the contract. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Made by Mr. Shannon. Boy, Ed, the sun really changed. You, it made you look about 10 years older there. Um, a second?
Thank you. Nobody ever says nice things about me though, you know? I mean, I don't understand.
Seconded, Kutsaratus. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Cap, Ms. Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Ray Weldy, I vote yes. That motion to authorize the township manager passes with a vote of five zero. Joe?
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. As far as the township cleanup day, uh, we have it scheduled for the 24th, starting in 9:00 AM. There are a few things, uh, since COVID is still prevalent, uh, we're asking basically for any shredding documents to be placed in boxes, bags, in the vehicle trunk area only. Um, in previous years, we would root around in people's backseats and so forth, uh, so as to protect one another, the, the resident as well as ourself, we would ask that any of the shredding documents be in the trunk area. If they, you know, if it's an SUV or a pickup, they have no formalized trunk, we will access it, but we don't want to be going in people's backseats for the most part. So, um, we would ask that as far as electronic items, it's first come, first served. Um, we have two trucks that are scheduled to be there. Uh, Public Works will be assisting there. There's no fee to the residents and all they would have to do is show a driver's license showing that they are residents. Um, and again, the same, the same aspect, if you have any electronic items, for it to be in, in, in the trunk area. So again, once, you know, protecting one another as best as we can. Uh, so I think that should be a good day and, and Ryan will be spearheading that particular day for us. He stepped up and and, and will be taking control on that given day. Um, as far as the sanitation rebates, they're still continuing again, to the end of July, July 31st. Uh, currently there's 648 rebates that have been issued to date. Uh, Denise has been doing a fabulous job working with all the residents and, and getting that done for us. Um, and trying to make it a, a decent, how do you say, uh, a decent transaction due to the fact that a lot of times people are knocking on their window. Uh, they wanna, you know, they wanna get their check. Denise will then step out at times that, you know, social distancing, of course, and trying to meet their needs as best as she can. So, um, I, I think it's a, it's a good thing, the sanitation rebate program. So, but that's all I have for the manager's report, Board Chair.
I have a question. I have a question, Mr. Chair. Um, on the, on the cleanup day. So volunteers that want to, um, volunteer, they just show up at the township building at nine o'clock and then they'll be directed on where to go, what to do, equipment that they're going to be getting.
Ryan, you want to speak on that, Ryan? Hold on one second. If, if Ryan can't answer, that's fine. I mean, basically we, we will be, we're trying to, in talking with Ryan, we're trying to coordinate people that have been, you may have a, a baseball team, um, or a, you know, group, a group of individuals. We're going to congregate them together if they've been in the same household or if they're on the same baseball team. They will be assigned a designated area or problem areas that the township has identified. Uh, they will be provided with, uh, gloves, uh, pickers so they can pick up the stuff, bags. Uh, we will have Public Works driving around the, the community and any bags that are set aside, the township, uh, workers would pick it up and then dispose of it from there.
And, and just to jump in real quick, Joe, um, Ryan texted me, he said, uh, have them call him. He has a log. He has about 30 people signed up. His microphone's not working.
Not a problem. Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
So, so residents that are listening, if you want to volunteer, call the fire marshal's office.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay.
Can I, can I interact something, sir? Chairman, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely, Ed.
Uh, the parade. Um, uh, I had a small conversation with Joe. And, uh, how does the board feel about having the parade, first of all? And obviously we need the township's help. Uh, not financially. We have plenty of money for the parade in the bank. Uh, but we need some help from the township, uh, Ms. Connie, Denise, uh, you know, and the public works, uh, the police department, you know, we need a lot of people helping us. Uh, not, not financially, just, uh, the police for directing traffic, obviously. And, um, I need some additional help for the parade itself. Uh, um, so anyway, uh, we're kind of kicking it around and, uh, as I said, we've got plenty of money in the bank to put on the parade. But there are other issues and how do we determine 75% of 3,000 people standing on the side and watching the parade? I mean, I don't, I'm kind of, um, waiting for something to, to, to twist that, uh, we can put it on. I think there's an awful lot of people that are interested in having the parade primarily because of getting out with each other and that kind of thing. Um, I mean, we could, you know, buy, uh, uh, 5,000 masks and, you know, make sure everybody wears one. Um, not so sure that's, that's relevant or, or prudent. Um, but anyway, I'd just like to find, you know, the comments from the board. Uh, what your thoughts are. Uh, and again, I had the money to do it. The township has, I don't have the money. Township has the money to do it in a separate bank account. So, and it typically costs us in about 25 to $30,000 to put it on. And we have probably $70,000 in the bank. So it's not a money issue. It's much more, how do you guys feel about it? And should we do it? Shouldn't we do it? Um, uh, I'm, I'm telling myself we should try it, but, uh, it needs a lot of help. It needs a lot of people and, and we certainly have a bunch of people that are interested in, in putting it on. And I guess I've said enough. Shut up, Ed. No. Anyway, comments, comments.
I mean, I, I think I still feel skeptical of what's to come today, you know, today, tomorrow, next month. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we know enough, you know, going forward in the future to be able to, um, possibly make that decision. That's a lot of people in a, in a contained area. When it's outside, but I don't know.
I'm, I'm, um, with you, Sue, on this. I, it's a lot of people, like you said, it's not to have to repeat, but it's a lot of people. There's so much. We don't know what's going on yet. We're not out of this yet. Um.
I don't know if we should be promoting that, I guess is what I, I'm leery of. Promoting a thousand people to come together.
Exactly.
Ed, Ed, if I could make a suggestion, maybe, maybe you could follow the, uh, the blueprint that I used in August and Kim used in October and, uh, speak to the fire marshal or incoming Parks and Recreation Director because the fire marshal has the most up-to-date information from the county health department, the CDC, and the Parks and Recreation Director should have all that too. Maybe meet with them as soon as you can, um, and speak to them about the circumstances and see what their recommendation is also, you know, and then you could come back to us and see what their feeling is because you're talking about a large amount of people, but you're talking about them being spread out over more than a mile. On two sides of the, both sides of the road. So maybe their input, you know, would help.
And possibly, and, and possibly the Bucks County Department of Health.
Yeah.
Well.
And, and Ryan is, Ryan has a good rapport with them and communicates with them, you know, pretty much on a daily or weekly basis. And, uh, can, can give us the most accurate information to help guide us or guide you.
Yeah. Well, that's very good comments. Thank you. I appreciate that. And, uh, Ryan, if you're still there, uh, could we get together Friday? Cause I'm in Florida right now.
Ed, Ryan said, give him a call. We just got an update today from the health department, a rather large update. So.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Ed, are you, are you flying him to Florida or are you coming back here?
I'm coming back tomorrow.
Okay. Just checking.
That's okay. Uh, you can check up on me anytime you'd like, Bunky. You know, that's okay.
Okay.
Even though it may be spread out, people. Even though it may be spread out, people still congregate together.
Well, they do, they do. And I think that's a very good comment to talk to Ryan and the county. That takes it off my bucket, at the very least.
Up with some type of modified something?
Well, that's, sure.
Kim did, or Ray did, or something that could be a modified parade.
Modified event.
If you have, if you have some comments, I'd love to hear them, please. I'd like to have it because of people that are talking to me about it's getting people together and this and that, and it should be a good thing. But I don't want to go ahead and do this without, without the approval of the board.
It'd be great to get the information and you could bring it, you know, for next time. That'd be great.
Yeah, we've got to, I've got to start doing something because participants in the parade, they're looking for, do we come there or do we go to someplace else, you know?
Yeah.
And the, like South Philadelphia String Band, they have two groups in our parade. And they're not cheap, you know, it's $3,500 just for them to come. And they don't want to do that if they're, if we're not going to have it, they'll go someplace else. So we'd need to do something fairly quickly to get those participants revved up.
Ed, have you heard if, or any other townships going to be doing the parade? Have you heard anything from anybody else?
I haven't. Upper South usually has the parade. I do not know if they're having it again or not. Yeah, who was it? Yardley, not Yardley.
Middletown does.
They're probably all waiting to see what everybody else does.
That could be, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Ed, what you should do too, I just remembered something. The American Legion, I think for Veterans Day, was able to pull off a parade up in Langhorne. So maybe you reach out to the commander of that post and see how they were able to do that. Because that was certainly more restrictive then than it is now, you know, so maybe they made some modifications and they were able to pull it off.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate the input. And I'll get together with Ryan and see where we go with this thing. And obviously, I'll keep you informed as to where we go.
Okay, thanks. Next up on the agenda is supervisors, Ms. Cummings?
Oh, we see a lot of people that come out for the cleanup day on April 24. It sounds like it'll be a great day, great community event here in Lower Southampton. And I also want to welcome Ryan to his permanent position now as the fire marshal. Look forward to him working with the, the two fire companies here in Lower Southampton. And so we welcome you, Ryan, to that position. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yeah, also want to congratulate Ryan. You've stepped up, Ryan. I wasn't, you know, I'll be honest, I've always liked you, but I did have some a little skepticism, you know, with some things in the past, but you've really proved yourself to me over the past 15 months. You've done a, done a good job and congratulations once again. Also too, we had a person write in tonight, a woman by the name of Miss Michelle Leish, I believe her name was, Lesch. And well, I tell you what, she's 100% dead on with the, with the issues with the traffic in our township. You know, kids are out playing now, you know, the roads are getting better, kids are on their bikes, you know, running around here, there, everywhere, you know, people really need to just slow it down when they're cruising through the neighborhood. You know, they need to stop at the stop signs, you know, not do 40 miles an hour on residential speeds, streets, it's just, you know, it's ridiculous. I see it all the time on my road, people just, you know, don't care. I don't know how the speed bump issue would, would come across. I know, you know, I've actually brought that up myself where I live and never, never seemed to go anywhere. There's a lot of, a lot of other things involved with that as far as the plowing. I know up in Middletown, they have, I think they call them speed humps. And they seem to do it, but I'm not sure how that would work down here in Lower South. But that's, that's about it there, Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Ryan also. I think he's done a magnificent job for the last 15 months as being an interim and not being permanently assigned. But I think he's going to do a great job. I think I felt that he would right along. I'm happy about our Parks and Recreation new hire, or not yet, but hopefully he's going to be a new hire. I think he's got all of the wherewithal to be a good guy in that job. I congratulate Joe for doing something with Peter and trying to work with him to help his situation and do a temporary okay for it. Other than that, I'll continue to try to put the parade on unless we run into a bunch of stuff, and then we'll back off of it. Other than that, thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Ms. Kaplan?
Um, yes. April 24 is going to be a busy day. We have our cleanup day, but also the Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission, they're doing, and it's on, I passed this information on, it's on a lot of our township social media pages. There's a Bucks County medication deposit, deposit program. It's a drive up and drop in Saturday, the 24th, from 10 to 2. And the closest location for that is at the Progressing Middle School and the Ben Salem Township Giant Food Store. This is all on our social media pages. Also, they will also be doing three sites only for sharps and vapors. And that would be at, again, Lower Southampton Giant Food Store for that. It's separate than the medication drop-off. And they're also giving out Naricon kits, free Naricon kits, why supplies last, that's also on our social media pages. And I'm very happy to announce that they're doing a home pickup service for older adults. That information, there's a form that's needed to fill out, and the deadline for that is coming up, that is April 16. So if that's something you're interested, please go on our pages and look into that. And it explains how that, the form explains how they're, they're going to implement that. The Bucks County Detectives will provide information to police departments located in the Bucks County area to be sent to your address to pick up the medications. So I have that. And also, in case you may or may not have been aware, there's been information out for West 3. That polling place is going to be changed from the wonderful church, Wonderful News Church, to Progressing. And I called the Board of Elections to find out why they're changing the location, and it is because the church is not ADA compliant. But if you want to know more information on that, you can go on the Board of Elections, Elections on our county webpage, on their county webpage, and there's going to be a meeting about that on Friday. I believe it's at 11:00 a.m. So you can watch the meeting. It's going to be live streamed on the Board of Elections Facebook page. You could also find out if you have concerns or questions, you could email them during the meeting, or you can even go to the meeting at the administration building, at the county administration building in Doylestown. And congratulations, Ryan. Welcome aboard. And I am also very excited about giving the information to our new Parks and Rec, Mr. Walter Maholland. I mean, it hasn't been officially hired yet, but he did accept the position, and now the township doing all the paperwork and all the tests that need to be done. So I'm happy about that as well. Thank you. Thanks for watching.
Thank you, Deb. I'd also like to add my congratulations to Ryan Smith. He certainly earned the opportunity to assume this position. The board has confidence in it, and we're confident that he'll do a good job. So thank you. Congratulations, Ryan. And also, I'd like to thank Peter Kim for his service to the township over the last year and a half, and also his willingness to stay in a transitional role in the Assistant Finance Director as we seek to get that job done. So thank you, Peter. I'd also like to recognize and thank Dr. Stuart Lakernick from Lakernick Chiropractic on the Myrtle Avenue. Dr. Lakernick organized and coordinated a food collection and donated a, a large amount of food to Pecossing Middle School's food pantry recently. That food pantry's been hit especially hard this year. So thank you, Dr. Lakernick. And last but not least, I'd like to thank Ms. Angie, Mrs. Angela Manning. Mrs. Manning is the, is the, is the mother of two former fifth grade students of mine, and she also runs a Girl Scout troop in Langhorne. The majority of her Girl Scout troop members are from Lower Southampton. Seeing the township, seeing the Township Cleanup Day advertisement, she has offered to volunteer her entire Girl Scout troop to come and help clean up the township. And she also asked if the Girl Scout Council could plant flowers and maybe a tree in some local township parks. So she's been put in touch with Park and Recreation. So thank you, Angie. That's all I have. We need a motion to adjourn if anyone would like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Gladly, Ed. Thank you. A second?
I'll second that, right?
Seconded by Ms. Cummings. Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Ray Weldy, I vote yes. Motion to adjourn is approved five nothing. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in, and have a great evening.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.